Okay, good evening. That's the official start of our work session this evening. And as all of you know who've been to these, we handle these slightly different in terms of the introductory portion of this, and we're gonna pretty much jump right into the meeting. This is not a regular meeting. Most times, we don't vote on issues and possibly will not this evening. But we do begin our meeting with the roll call, so I'll ask our town clerk to call the roll.
Mayor Marshburn?
I'm present.
Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
Councilmember Singleton?
Here.
Councilmember Dellinger?
Here.
Councilmember, Mayor Pro Tem Vance?
Here.
Okay, thank you. You'll note, I'm sure, that Councilmember Behringer's not here tonight. She has a, an excused absence. She notified us in advance of this meeting that she would be out of town, and so we note that, and so her absence is excused this evening. We'll jump right into the agenda, and council, the first item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. What say you?
I move.
Seconded.
Okay, motion properly made and seconded. All in favor of adopting agenda, would you vote aye?
Aye.
Any opposition, no? There is none. Thank you very much. Okay, we have two presentations this evening. Looking forward to both of those, and we're gonna recognize, first of all, Representative from Wake Med. I believe our speaker is Ms., is that Alyssa Dunn?
Alyssa.
Alyssa, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Okay, yes, and we know your cohort there. Ms. Andy Curtis is also with Wake Med, so good to have you, and look forward to hearing from you. So go right ahead.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to come speak again. My name is Alyssa Dunn. I'm a physical therapist by trade, but I am a healthcare administrator at Wake Med in the rehab hospital, and I have the pleasure of being the director of the stroke program there. And May is Stroke Awareness Month, so we got this in just in time. Thank you to Councilor Vance for inviting us to speak today. So I'm gonna try the clicker and see if that works. Just wanted to share that Wake Med sharing Wake County with the great town of Garner. This is our strategic pyramid and some of our aspirational goals, one of which I have circled here is healthy community. So one of Wake Med's big goals is to have the healthiest capital county, or be the healthiest capital county within the United States. So we want to share with you in that mission. So I want to talk a little bit about stroke. A lot of the people in the room probably know someone who's had a stroke, have a relative who's had a stroke. Most people are kind of familiar, but what we find with stroke patients that come through our rehab program is that there's kind of a general lack of awareness of certain specific things that would be helpful for the community members to know. So that's what I want to share a little bit of today. So what is a stroke? Specifically, it is a sudden interruption of blood flow to part of the brain. So arteries that supply blood through our body, that carry oxygen that is required for cells to live, is not coming through for some reason. So there's two major types. One is ischemic, which is where a clot or a buildup of cholesterol or different plaques is blocking the artery. So think about that like a clogged pipe in your plumbing of your home. So the water, or in this case, the blood, is not getting past that blockage, so all of those cells beyond that, that are supposed to be fed by that artery, are not getting the oxygen that they need. So those cells are dying. The second major kind is hemorrhagic stroke, and that is, think of that more as a leaking pipe, where the blood vessel is either ruptured or has a leak in it, and therefore, the blood is not getting to its intended location. It's spilling out elsewhere, and potentially causing even a brain bruise or hemorrhage inside the skull. So those are the two major types of strokes, and they have different kind of causes and different kind of risk factors, but, but we kind of consider them together as very big medical emergencies. And the third thing on that slide is a transient ischemic attack, and that is when someone has the symptoms of a stroke, which we'll talk about in a second, but they resolve themselves within less than a day. So someone might have numbness in their hand, or they might have difficulty speaking, but it goes away in an hour. And a lot of times, that transient ischemic attack is something that happens to a person before they have a more involved stroke. So it can be kind of a warning sign to sort of, okay, I need to get on some of these stroke reduction, risk reduction things. So I do want to share that eighty percent of strokes are actually preventable, and that doesn't mean they're easy to prevent. It doesn't mean living super healthy, which is the big recommendations, is easy, but it is something that people do have some control over, and that's what we really want to get out in front of people in our community, to kind of empower them to take better control of their health, to prevent a stroke. So this next slide is the United States, as you can tell, broken out by counties, and who knew that out west, the counties are just huge, but they are, and the yellow arrow points to Wake County. And so this is a demographic that shows the darker purple is the higher prevalence of stroke. And as you can see from that, Wake County is super dark purple, meaning that between eighty-nine and one-hundred-and-seventy-eight people per one-hundred-thousand that live in this county will have a stroke, or have had a stroke. A stroke is happening in the United States every forty seconds to someone or another. So since I've been speaking, there have been a number of strokes that have occurred. This is not all doom and gloom, but it is important that people kind of understand and don't take the attitude of, well, that probably won't happen to me. In the rehab hospital, we deal a lot with traumatic injuries, where I can say to somebody, wear your seatbelt, wear a helmet, do all these things to prevent you from having severe injury. And this is kind of the same message that I would pass for stroke prevention. There's no helmet, there's no this, but there are things we can do to better prevent this from happening to ourselves or our loved ones. It is the fifth leading cause of death in the United States, but it is the number one leading cause of disability. And so what that means is, sadly, there's a lot of work in rehab. It is more likely that someone you love is going to have a stroke and have some deficits, and continue living with those deficits, whether they're mild or severe, than they are to die of a stroke. So there's this huge population of people that have had a stroke that we need to support as community leaders, with advocacy, transportation, all kinds of other good stuff that Councilman, or excuse me, Mr. Vance heard me speak of earlier this month. So moving on, stroke awareness. This you have in your handouts, this is kind of a chance that we give to people out in the community to look at their own risk factors, and really notice, are they, do they have a lot of things checked in that high-risk column? Are they in that kind of yellow caution area? Do they have a low risk, and are they doing great with these things? But the kind of things that are risk factors are known to most people, but they don't quite understand how it relates. So blood pressure is the number one preventable cause of stroke. When your blood pressure goes really high, and you have certain clots or high cholesterol in your arteries, or your arteries are weaker from having high blood pressure that you haven't managed well, the chances of you having a stroke are much, much higher. Cholesterol, diabetes, whether someone is a smoker or not, that's a huge, huge risk factor, and we've done a great job in this local community with decreasing smoking, certainly within the Raleigh and Wake County areas, exercise, weight, healthy weight management, and then, of course, some things you can't control, like family history of stroke, your age, actually being female, you have a higher chance of having a stroke, and that kind of thing. So we want people to focus on, what are the things they can do something about? So as we said earlier, when, when you're lacking blood flow to the brain, it's, those brain cells are dying. So it's important that you get medical care really, really quickly. I'm sorry, I got ahead of myself. We'll come back to that. We talked a little bit about this. This is just an infographic that shows about some of the risk factor management that people can do. It's not in one of the images, but one of the top things is really having a primary care physician and getting regular physician visits, because a lot of us have, including myself, some of these chronic diseases that you have to kind of own and manage, whether it's your blood pressure, cholesterol, or if you're diabetic. If you manage those things well, those are not really big risk factors. If you don't control them and manage them well, as guided by your physician, then they can be huge risk factors. So we say, know your numbers. What are your numbers, whether you're diabetic, or someone with high blood pressure, for example. Certainly, drinking in moderation is recommended, along with healthy diet, exercise, that's not even on here, but healthy weight management, staying active, stopping smoking, and trying to get some good restful sleep. If you have suspicion of sleep apnea, that's something important to get worked up, because it can increase your stroke risk factors. This sounds all depressing, doesn't it? But when people don't know, and they've had a stroke, and they come to me and go, I wish someone had just told me. I had no idea. So that's kind of our mission. So thinking about time is brain. So the longer someone goes with symptoms of a stroke, without it being addressed, the more brain is dying, the more deficits they're gonna have, or challenges they're gonna have later on. So this is the big, and this is modified recently, the big stroke recognition thing we want everyone to know, including five-to-seven-year-olds, who really do pick this up when we're out in the community, is BFAST. So the letters, the acronym, BFAST is what we want to get out there. These are all possible symptoms of a stroke. It could also be something else, but if it's a stroke and you don't get attention, then you have a problem. So B stands for balance. The B and the E were added a couple of years ago, and our committee is advocating for them to be added in the national, or excuse me, the American Stroke Association uses only FAST, but the B and the E actually identify fourteen percent of stroke patients only have one of those top two symptoms, and we would miss them if we don't teach folks this acronym. So B is for balance. If someone's having trouble balancing walking with coordinated movement, that could be a stroke, especially if it's sudden onset. E is for eyes. If someone's having trouble seeing, they're having double vision, or they're kind of squinting or closing one eye to be able to see you, that could be a stroke. F is for face. If they have facial droop, or you ask them to smile, or you look at yourself in the mirror to smile, and it's not symmetrical, that can be a sign of a stroke. A is for arm or leg, where if someone is trying to move, they're unable to move one arm or leg, or if they lift them up, one of them doesn't continue to cooperate. And S is for speech, where someone may have slurred speech, they may have trouble getting their words out, or they may even be looking at you like you're crazy, because they can't understand what you're saying. And so all of those culminate in T, and T is the most important one. If any of these signs or symptoms are happening, it is time to call 911, and no delay. Folks who get medical attention at an emergency room within ninety minutes of stroke symptoms have huge, huge increased chance of full recovery. So it makes a really, really big difference. So BFAST, and I have magnets for all of your fridges to help you with that. And little kids do learn this, and they're like, oh, yeah, that's a sign of a stroke. So what, what they would do, if you call 911 for yourself or a loved one, these, these are the kind of medical interventions that are possible. They would do a National Institute of Health Stroke Scale, gives you a level, tells people all on the team kind of how you're presenting. They would call a code stroke. As soon as you arrive to a health plex or emergency room, that gets all the right people aware that you're there, or your loved one is there, so that they can start this parallel process where time is of the essence. They would do imaging to determine if it is a stroke in fact, and if it is, what type of stroke is it? Is it that clot stroke, the ischemic stroke, or the leaking stroke, the hemorrhagic stroke? And they're gonna take different steps depending on what they find in, in between those two. If it is one of those clot strokes, they're gonna look at possibly using TPA, which is a clot-busting medication that goes in through IV, and that medicine goes in and can attack a clot, and sometimes clear it completely, allowing the blood to flow again. Another thing that is happening, many of our local hospitals do this, is we have neurovascular surgeons who can go and do what's called endovascular clot retrieval, which means they thread a device up through your artery, and if it's in a larger vessel, they can go in and actually grab the clot and pull it out. And I've seen on a gauze pad, a clot almost as big as my pinky come out of someone's brain, and then the blood is able to flow again. That is not done a majority of the time. It has to be just the right person, just the right blood vessel, just the right placement, but that can be a lifesaver. And they can't do those things if it's been twelve hours. And I took a nap, thinking, oh, I'll feel better later. They would also work on regulating blood pressure, and then all the efforts that they're doing is to prevent or minimize cell death in the brain, so that the person has the best chance at a strong recovery. Last slide. So talking about having a lot of people surviving a stroke, but having some level of deficit or disability. I want to talk about stroke rehab. I happen to work in the inpatient rehab hospital at Wake Med, which is the number twenty-one rehab hospital in the nation. We're trying to get top twenty, but there's rehab in a lot of different places. You could have it just in the hospital, home health therapy, outpatient therapy, skilled nursing facility, short-term rehab places. There are a lot of really good resources, but the most important thing is that wherever that happens, the brain has the best capability of healing within the first month after a stroke, and the best results in the first ninety days. So it is very important that someone get intensive physical occupational and speech therapy, if that's what they need, pretty soon after they've had a stroke. And the interdisciplinary team really should be the patient themselves, their family, and then physicians, nurses, case managers, therapists. And the point of rehab is really returning someone to their desired life roles and their best level of independence, and I'm proud to say I manage a therapy team of seventy that does that every day, and this is some of them here. So proud of those accomplishments, and there is a little tour of the rehab hospital on that link if anybody is so interested. And that is all I have today.
So, well, thank you. I know I have at least a question, but I want to defer to council first to see what questions they may have, and/or comments, and I'll start with Mayor Pro Tem Vance, if he has anything.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would first like to say a thank you to Ms. Dunn, and also to Ms. Curtis for coming out and providing this information to us. Several weeks ago, I had the opportunity to visit the rehab facility at Wake Med, and it's amazing, the facility and the operation that's going on there, relative to rehabilitation, and particularly stroke, and also the things that families, and not only impacts that one person who had a stroke, but it also changes the dynamics within a family. So it was really good to see the processes and all the work that's going on there, along with the, along with the information provided, referenced to BFAST, and everything to look out for relative to a, relative to a stroke. I would say fifty years ago, this year, my aunt, my great aunt had a stroke, and we did not recognize exactly quickly what was going on, the strangeness, but it was not recognizable then. However, with the information now, we say, well, something's going on, and that's, that's more likely a stroke she's having. But I would say, it was very interesting, and I hope everyone is able to get a copy or one of those magnets so that we can have them on your, on the refrigerator, or whatever, so you can see and react quickly. And one last thing, when I had the tour, I also had the opportunity to see the great farmer's market that's out there at Wake Med as well. So if you get an opportunity, I would say, go out and check, check out a few of the facilities there and see what's happening on the main Wake Med campus. Thank you again. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Dellinger?
No, just thank you for the information, and I know you all take it seriously.
No, just thank you for the information, and I know you all take it seriously, had the unfortunate occurrence many years ago, to have to go to the emergency room with a suspected stroke situation, and went right to the desk and said, we think this is a stroke. They went straight to the back.
Boom.
It was like, no hesitation. So you, it's just, you take it seriously, and I'm sure it does, has a lot of good positive impacts on folks that you take it so seriously. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for those comments.
Mr. Singlin.
Yes, thank you for coming. Thank you for your information. It's very helpful. Sure, Russ, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
Mr. Matthews.
Oh, thank you. I've learned a lot here in a short period of time. Looking forward to getting one of those magnets and with Ms. Curtis out there, and you guys seem like we're starting to spend a lot of time together here in Garner. We really like that, so that's going to be good. But thank you very much. Great presentation.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, and so, yeah, thinking about what Mr. Vance said about touring the hospital out there, as we know with the recent announcements, we hope to have another hospital to tour right here in Garner in a few years. I hear a lot about vaping these days, I guess maybe more so with the younger generation, but obviously, one of the negatives is if people smoke. What about vaping? Does that fit in that same general category? I know it's not, they're not inhaling the same kind of material, but...
That's a great question. As a mother of a teenager, yeah, there's a lot of vaping going on. I don't know it well enough to, I will find the answer in the research. I don't want to be, you know, misquote anything, but I think there is the same level, any tobacco use, there is the same level of concern. I'm not sure as much about oral tobacco use, but just the lung involvement and, and what that does from a vasoconstriction of blood vessels. Smoking does that over time, and so you've got smaller blood vessels that are easier to leak, more specifically than, than, than clot. But let me find a more valuable reference on that, and I'll get that back to you guys.
That's fine, yeah.
But yes, I would never encourage vaping. I've actually seen a teenager have a lung collapse from vaping and be in the ICU for several months, so it's, it can be incredibly dangerous.
And I haven't researched too much, but I think some of our municipalities around different areas have been proactive in the way maybe zoning is done, or other things to discourage vaping shops, or whatever they're called in their town. But yeah, very, very good presentation, and thank you so much for taking your time. This was meaningful, and this is live streamed, so people who are out there listening, or they can dial in later on, will get the information as well. So it's very helpful.
Thank you all so much for having me. I appreciate it.
Thank you. You can leave those, I guess, those refrigerator things with somebody out there, yeah. Okay, thank you. Okay, the next presentation is the BRT South Project Update, and for many of us on council, you'll recognize the young gentleman who is going to present this evening, Mr. Het Patel. And so we look forward to hearing from you, sir, and the floor is yours.
All right, thank you. Good evening, mayor and council. I'm going to present from here, if that's okay, because that is more comfortable for me as well, being in the shoe before. I'm here, Het Patel, City of Raleigh Transportation Transit Division, to provide an update on the Southern Corridor. I was in front of you guys last, in August of last year, when we were getting ready to submit the Southern Corridor to what we call the Federal Transit Administration's Capital Investment Grant Program's Small Starts Ratings Process. So again, today, I'm going to provide a pretty quick overview of where we are on the project, overall Bus Rapid Transit Program overview, some of the key next steps coming up for the capital investment grant process of the Southern Corridor project, and then the next steps overall for the Southern Corridor project. So we always like to start our slides with the presentation of the overall program. Three of the four Bus Rapid Transit corridors in the Wake County, Wake Transit Plan are in the federal process that's known as the Capital Investment Grant Small Starts Project Development Process. So this is a process that all projects looking for federal funding that are Bus Rapid Transit projects would have to follow through. New Bern Avenue is our most advanced project within this process. It got its full funding grant agreement in August of last year, which means it's gone, you know, past that milestone, and the next milestone for the project really is construction, which we hope to begin by the end of this year. Southern Corridor is at about 10% design. We're quickly moving towards 30% design this summer, and we'll be back in front of you sometime late this summer to present the actual 30% design. So I'm not going to focus today so much on the design components, but really focus on the federal process and what the next steps are for the project itself. And so again, the next step for the Southern Corridor is trying to continue to advance that design into final design by the end of the calendar year 2024. Western Corridor is also at 10% design and has a little bit longer of a target timeline for getting to final design by the end of 2025. So I mentioned the Federal Transit Administration's Capital Investment Grant Program. This is the small starts process. It is a two-step process that the projects have to go through. Again, you can kind of see within that timeline, New Bern Avenue is the most advanced and has surpassed that step two, which is the full funding grant agreement, and can now begin the construction activities on the project as soon as we actually have NC DOT approval, and we're ready to bid the construction and start that work. For Southern and Western, they're both within that first step, which is the project development phase, where you go through and submit the project for a ratings application, get it funded, or get it rated federally to identify if it's eligible for federal funding. So for Southern Corridor, that is why I was in front of you in August, to submit what we wanted to for the federal ask for the project, and the next steps for the Southern Corridor are really, again, continuing to work on the environmental documentation, which is the NEPA documentation, completing our third-party agreements with NC DOT, getting design reviews during the key milestones with NC DOT, and then continuing to advance final design. So Southern Corridor, again, as you know, five miles coming out of downtown Raleigh, connecting to North-South Station and the Walmart at Perser Drive in Town of Garner. Ten total proposed stations, nine stations would be new construction, one of them would be constructed as part of the New Bern Avenue Corridor within downtown Raleigh at the Go-Raleigh Station. Seven 60-foot articulated buses. If you think about buses that you've seen at airports that are kind of connected together, that's, that's what a 60-foot articulated bus is. It's slightly larger than the 40-foot buses that we have, and it allows for more capacity, allows for more opportunities, amenities, and features, like allowing bicycles directly on the bus instead of in front of the bus. So we would have seven 60-foot articulated buses that would be needed for the service on the Southern Corridor. We started the design for the Southern Corridor in fall of 2021. I mentioned a couple of times, I was here in August to present the ratings submission. The most noted achievement or milestone for this project was in March of this year, when the project was recommended in the FY24 President's Budget for approval, or his budget proposal to Congress. So it's included in the budget proposal to Congress. The next step for that is the congressional approval. Once the congressional approval happens on the President's Budget, then the Federal Transit Administration would be able to appropriate those funds to a project sponsor and, and actually have a full funding grant agreement in the future. To get to that step, there are a few steps that the project sponsor has to advance and show from a readiness perspective to receive those funds. And so the next steps for our project, again, are this summer, we will be making a contract award and selection for a final design consultant to begin working from 30% design to final design on the Southern Corridor. And once those, you know, key milestones are, are starting to be achieved, so when we get to about 60% design, typically is when you can have a risk review process with the Federal Transit Administration, which really looks at the project across other nationwide projects, and compares the design, cost estimates, does another independent third-party review of your project, to see what potential risks are for implementing the project, to see if your project costs align with other nationwide Bus Rapid Transit projects, kind of trying to pick holes at what your design really shows. And again, from a federal funding perspective, making sure that the project sponsor is ready to receive those funds to move into the construction phase. So I didn't really highlight a timeline in here, but, you know, I would say between the summer of 2023 and the end of calendar year 2024 is when we would be looking to try to achieve some of these next steps. Once we have a final design consultant onboard, working on final design, we would come back, present some of the milestones at 30% design, 60% design, and continue to keep the town updated as we advance in the federal process to a risk review and get to a readiness review. But ultimately, to get to that step two, which is the full funding grant agreement from the federal partner, you have to have completed the risk review and the readiness review from the Federal Transit Administration, and then get their go-ahead to get to that full funding grant agreement. And so that, again, speaking from experience on New Bern Avenue, that process took about two years to get there, from the point we were at about 30% design, and got through a full readiness review with the Federal Transit Administration. And so that is a really quick update on the Southern Corridor, and really, we just wanted to get in front of you to present on, you know, what it meant for the project to be in the FY24 President's Budget Proposal to Congress, and what those next steps are as a project sponsor, to show the Federal Transit Administration that we, you know, eventually, when we complete certain level of final design, we would be ready to ask for the full funding grant agreement and ready to try to get the project into construction. So I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you so much. It's a pretty exciting project, as far as I'm concerned. I'll start with Mr. Matthews this time, and see if he has any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Great presentation. It's always good to see you come back and keep us updated like this, and we know it does take some time to get it done, but it's nice to know we were on target with the levels, and you've kept us well informed, and we appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Singlin.
Said, I got a question about the New Bern Avenue route. We see the, the picture here in front of the main campus of Wake Med. Is most of that route going to be in the median? Is that where it's being planned to? And how far is that can go, over 40, continuing on New Bern Avenue East?
So on New Bern Avenue, the project does have dedicated lanes from downtown out to Wake Med, right at about Sunnybrook Road, so right at the main campus. East of the main campus, across 40, and out towards New Hope Road, we would be in mixed traffic. So that corridor is at about 68% dedicated lanes. The Southern Corridor, in comparison, coming out of downtown Raleigh to Garner Station Boulevard, would be in dedicated lanes, and then the mixed traffic component is the loop around Garner Station Boulevard. So really, for the Southern Corridor, it actually has more dedicated lanes than the New Bern Avenue Corridor does at the moment.
It's dedicated all the way to north-south, and then the loop around where the Walmart is, 40, and then go back?
Yeah.
Okay. I was just curious about New Bern Avenue, since you're moving forward, and looking at the diagram. I couldn't remember, you probably told us this before, how far it was going east, but up to Sunnybrook, it's dedicated from downtown.
New Bern Avenue is about 3.3 miles of total dedicated lanes, and the Southern Corridor is about 3.8 miles of dedicated lanes.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
All that roadway has to be built. I mean, it can't be incorporated with some of the pavement that's already there.
So for New Bern Avenue, some of it, within downtown, coming out on the one-way pairs of New Bern and Edenton, there is reuse of pavement that's out there. Within the median-running segments of the New Bern Corridor, there would be new dedicated lane construction. Similarly, for the Southern Corridor, you know, we have some areas of South Wilmington Street that have pavement out there that could be used. A general-purpose lane could be reduced as a dedicated bus lane, but when you get to the South Wilmington Street extension, that would be new roadway construction.
Mr. Dillinger.
Thanks for the presentation. I know New Bern's further along, but it's still got a long way to go, but to date, what are some of the lessons learned from that process that you're kind of looking forward to the other corridors, and, you know, things that are good and bad, whatever?
So I'll just say, I'll put my engineering services hat on real quick. I think one of the biggest ones is utility coordination early on. New Bern Avenue, you know, I think we knew that there would be utility coordination, but hitting that at 60% design and onwards took a lot longer than anticipated. And so for Southern Corridor, we are starting some of those utility conversations much earlier at 30% design, trying to really understand what utilities are out there, which may need, you know, encroachment agreements to relocate outside of the work that's going to happen on the BRT corridor itself. So that's a big one, and that's nationwide. You know, I recently attended a American Public Transportation Association's Mobility Conference, where Bus Rapid Transit was a key focus of a construction roundtable, and everyone's noticing a utility conflict and a utility moving, moving within public right-of-way as, as a big concern for project schedules, for things like that. And the other one, from a construction perspective, is just identifying what your long lead-time items are, you know, from an infrastructure perspective. Fiber, ITS, they're a key component of the construction of the project, and some of them have a lot of lead time needed, so just making sure that you can build that into the schedule as well.
I guess, kind of go with that, too, you know, with the New Bern being all the way, all in Raleigh, what sort of your thought process around making sure Garner and, and all of that stays in sync from whatever we have to vote on perspective, or information, or coordinating the utility stuff that crosses municipal lines and stuff like that?
Yes, and we've had these early conversations with town staff, but I think there will be kind of formal processes of review, either through the town's engineering services department at the different milestones, 30%, 60%, making sure that, again, if there's other developments that are occurring along the corridor, or if there's any other information that the city may not be aware of, the city's consulting may not be aware of, that we're sharing that information and building that into the process. Yeah, thank you.
Vance?
Mr. Patel, thank you very much for the briefing, and we know that plans can change, but it seems like this one is still moving steadily on a glide path, hopefully, for completion when it's scheduled to. But thank you for the briefing.
Thank you.
Okay, any follow-up from anybody? All right, I echo the council's thoughts. We look forward to having you come back for an update when the time is right.
Sounds good. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Wish you well. Okay, that covers the presentations. The next item on our agenda is the FY24 Recommended Budget. That will be led, at this point, by Ms. Sarah Warren, our budget manager. So I'll recognize you, Ms. Warren.
So we're here today just to give you an update of where we, from where we were at our public hearing on the 16th. So just a reminder that the recommended budget that was presented to you at the beginning of May was 59.9 million. It reflected a 13% increase over the FY23 amended budget. It included a 5.5 cent tax increase, 2 cents for our 2021 bond program, 1.5 cent for Fire Station 5, and 2 cents for additional FTEs. We also utilized our American Rescue Plan and Revenue Savings Plan dollars to help us balance the budget. Part of what we recommended, or what was recommended, was an annual investment of 3.6 million to implement pay-in-class. This would be effective October 25th, and would be reflected in employees' paychecks on October 13th. In order to do that, at that time, we proposed pausing merit in FY24. That would give us time to re-envision our merit system and our performance program to bring back in FY25. We funded an additional nine FTEs in HR, finance, legal, custodial services, and police, and we also funded additional battalion chiefs for fire that will be cost-shared with Wake There was also some follow-up, when we wanted to look at an additional increase for employees in lieu of merit. So we looked at an additional half-cent tax increase, which yields approximately $287,000 in additional revenue. This would allow for a 2% pay adjustment to go into effect in January of 2024 for all town and Garner Fire employees. We are also able to fund the Flock camera upgrade to Flock OS in the Police Department. That cost is a total of $40,000. There would, we would fund most of that with that half-cent tax increase and cover the remaining $13,000 within the base. This is just a reminder of where, with that additional half cents, what our multi-year model looks like. And then where we are on our timeline is, we're nearing the end of the fiscal year, so we are targeting June 6th for our budget adoption, and here we are at the last work session in May. So what are the next, oh, I'm sorry, we also have our public comment, which will remain open until the end of the week. All of you got an updated packet of the public comments that have been received through our our portal. There were a total of six. So three were provided to you in advance of the work session, and then there were another three that have come in since then. But that will remain open until the end of the week. So looking at our next steps, in order to adopt the budget, we will need to have all of you pass the ordinance that sets our tax rate based upon current conversations with the 5.5 cent that was recommended, plus an additional half-cent. We're looking at a total tax levy of 61.21 cents. Two of that would be for their bonds, 1.5 for Fire Station 5, two for new positions, and then another half-cent for the 2% pay adjustment. So that would bring our total budget to approximately $60.3 million. In order to, so targeting the 6th, we would then look for guidance if we're comfortable with moving forward with that date. Those ordinance will have to be prepared and sent out this week in advance of the meeting on Tuesday in order to continue with that timeline.
And of course, it may be mentioned here this evening, obviously, we, our drop-dead date is the end of June. This could potentially extend to the second meeting in June, I guess, before a vote, but I'm not trying to predict what may happen. So council, your opportunity for further comments, discussions. I'll start with Mr. Singleton this time.
I'll defer to see what others have to say.
Okay, all right. Mr. Dillinger?
Yeah, just, I think the 6th may be a little ambitious, having some conversations individually with council members and trying to look a little deeper into some things and think some things through a little more. So I think we may want to push that back at this time.
So then, if that's the case, our next, we'll still need to provide some information to the public at our meeting next week.
Okay. Mr. Vance?
No questions at this time?
Okay. Mr. Matthews?
Nothing at this time, ma'am.
The public portal will remain open, as you mentioned, and I'm supposing will the, can that information be presented to council, I guess, sort of as they come in? Or I know we have several here at our dais that better responses from the public portal. Is it anticipated we would look at those that come in in the interim time on the night of the meeting? Or can we, I guess from my perspective, I'd like to see them maybe as they come in, if that's not problematic.
So we can certainly look at doing that. I think the thought was that we would provide any additional comments that do come in ahead of the 6th. Should you want to keep it longer, open longer, we can certainly look at doing that and having them, I mean, there's a lot of ways we can look at that.
Okay. And I wasn't suggesting that we keep the portal open longer. I guess I was just suggesting that maybe the information be provided to us as they come in, as opposed to maybe consolidating them and bringing them here.
We can look at doing that. If any come in before Friday, we can forward them along.
Okay, good. All right, we'll go around again for Ms. Warren. Mr. Singleton?
Or can you go back about three? I want to go back to the keyboard, right there. So as we talked about it, the budget work session, which is showing the next four budget years, are potential shortfalls and also potential additions of FTEs. The large number in the middle at 26 will be if one of the parks or if some of the parks and rec facilities are completed. That's the bulk of that. That's why the increase there is so substantial. But we're still looking at, based off what we see here, and I know we don't know what the revaluations can bring, substantial shortfalls in the next four years, based off projections of completed projects and needed full-time employees, along with other maintenance and standard, not standard, but annual operations and maintenance of the entire town. And the first bond sale has been completed, I'm assuming correct. It was supposed to be completed this month?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, okay. All right. All right, thank you.
Patel, anything? Mr. Matthews, anything? Okay, down here. Mr. Dillinger? If there's no other questions by council, this is not a public hearing, so I don't want to extend the time too much. But at any rate, we'll let Ms. Warren take her rest, and if anybody here wants to make a comment, I guess I would invite somebody to do that, to come to the podium here. Did you have anything else?
They're just looking for clarification on whether we want to proceed with the timeline of adopting the budget on the 6th.
Okay.
I'll agree with Mr. what Mr. Dillinger noted that. As he just talked with me, we've talked individually, one-on-one, some of his thoughts. So I would take his suggestion of what he said, and I would project that this should be done at the second meeting in June.
Okay, which would, I don't have the date in front of me, but we can find it.
The 20th, I believe that's.
The 20th.
It sounds like, yeah, okay. What say the rest of council on that matter?
Yep.
An agreement that we probably want to wait until the 20th for the actual vote?
And so then, the 6th would be the next opportunity to bring additional information. That agenda will go out on Thursday. So if there, is there additional information that staff should start looking into in preparation for Tuesday?
Well, I would say to council, I think this would be the correct thing, if, you know, if you have something that, you know, you want to bring to the Budget Committee and the Chairperson, that needs to be done right away.
Yes.
So that we can prepare adequately for the June 6th meeting, right?
Correct.
If we could have any scenarios in front of us as soon as possible, Mayor. Give us time to analyze those, run them through our model, and make any adjustments that might need to be made. And also, just knowing there's a number of steps we have to do once the council approves the budget, as far as getting the budget ordinance together and reconciling all the numbers and anything like that, that would be appreciated, so.
So considerable amount of background work that has to be done after certain decisions are already made, right?
Yes.
Okay, council.
And depending on what type of decisions are made, we may have to consult with others outside the town staff, you know, our finance advisors or whatever. So it just depends on what type of tweaks we might make to where we stand now.
Okay. All right. So at this point, I think it's fair to say that the vote would not happen at the first meeting in June, but would be at the second meeting in June. That's, I guess, clarified. Okay, anything else from council? Did you need anything else to hear from council at this time, other than expedite getting any?
Scenarios sooner rather than later would be appreciated.
Exactly. Yeah, okay. It's a fair question, all right. Well, thank you very much. Obviously, it's been quite a process. We're not finished with it yet, but we'll get it done, I'm sure. Thank you for your efforts. Okay. Do you want any other reports on my agenda? So we will go to manager reports at this time. Mr. Manager?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, you have the pending agenda document in the back of your agenda packet, and just a few little things there coming up over the next few weeks. And, you know, obviously, based on today's conversation, we would move the budget adoption to the June 20th meeting. So that is one change we'll definitely have on that one. And then we have not a lot of things right now on the June 20th meeting, so we'll just move that over. Other thing I have, a couple of announcements. So we have a group that is preparing for our second annual Juneteenth celebration, and that will be held at the Garner Performing Arts Center on June 17th, which is a Saturday, starting at 11:00 a.m., and run for maybe an hour or so, maybe a little over an hour. So we invite everyone to come out for this free event that will educate, entertain, and inspire. Featured performers are Duke Professor and Garner native Mary Williams. I know she grew up right in the Ran Road area. Formerly, she's a Dobbins. So she will use kind of a monologue-type style and sing and tell the story of Juneteenth. We also have joining us again for a second consecutive year Gospel Legend Lena Mae Perry, who's been spotlighted on PBS. Her family gospel group, The Branchettes, and some of the things that she's done, and she participated with us for a number of years at the Senior Center when we would celebrate Black History Month. And also joining us will be Wake Baptist Grove Choir. So they'll sing a couple of selections for us. And we'll have some other speakers. And I think one of the things we want to do is showcase Garner businesses and the heritage of Garner African-American businesses in Garner and rich heritage of African-American businesses on Main Street and going back to Henry Fort, I think he was a furniture maker, and trying to use that legacy and to spotlight some of our current Garner businesses downtown. And then also, on the second Friday, Family Flix Event will start for the season on June 9th, and that's at 8:45 on the lawn at Garner Rec Center. The film will be Strange World, and it's free to the public. There will be concessions available for purchase, and the rain date is the same time the following day. So don't forget to bring your lawn chairs or blankets so you can relax and enjoy the film.
Okay, thank you. Did you say the starting time for the Juneteenth event?
11:00 p.m. I mean, not p.m., 11:00 a.m. Yes. Do not show up at 11:00 p.m. You'll be the only one there. 11:00 a.m. to approximately 12:15 p.m.
Okay, yeah, all right. Okay, thank you, sir. Any questions for the manager regarding his report down here?
I have a question regarding the future meetings. Within the last 60 days, what I recall, we've had, we had a couple of large residential subdivisions come before us. One got pulled at the meeting. That was the one at the former, I think, Par golf that backed up to the subdivision where there were numerous residents here. And there's another one that, and I don't see it anywhere on there. So I'm assuming that's been either it came out the planning commission or they've been delayed for some reason, one way or the other.
I know the Par golf has been delayed due to some things between developer, private owners, some things to work out there. I don't know the details or anything to share here. I'm not sure about the other one. John, you know anything about the other one?
The one that was going on the front of the project that would back up, that would connect to the Magical Vander Springs Extension if that ever happened one day, that project.
I think that one is coming back in the, potentially, the second meeting in June. And so it may not have made it on the pending agenda document. There were some updates from staff today when we had our preparation meeting. So I think there were two cases that'll be coming back, one at the first meeting of June and one at the second, that may not have made it to the document that's in your packet. One is the Highway 70 business building, and the other is the one you're asking about, I think, is the second meeting.
Just curious, since they've been before, so didn't know if there were any delays that had been. I know one had been pulled for some reason. Thank you.
Okay, any other question for the manager? Okay, thank you, sir. We are, we'll hear from council on reports at this time, and I'll start with Mr. Matthews on my left.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It has been an exciting Memorial Weekend, and it was great to see so many people, especially all the council and out at the park. I wasn't sure how the rain was going to impact us, but we went having a great crowd and a lot of accolades, especially to our very professional Garner police and fire honor guard. They represented us very well. Little Miss Hannah Quinn Livin, who sang the National Anthem. If you didn't have goosebumps when she finished, I need to have a talk with you. And she did excellent. Mr. Tim Stevens, the stories he told, he kept everybody captivated in the special presentation from the Seymour Johnson Air Force Base. And also taps, Gus Lloyd with Boy Scouts did an excellent job. That was, he was actually playing those taps. And the feedback I have got from everything has been very, very positive. It's probably one of the best ones. And I heard the MC went too bad. He did the best he could. Also, the Purple Heart community signs were up. If you've seen those, I certainly appreciate the Public Works Force and all the gang getting those in and putting them up. They look really good. So you've got Garner All-American City and a Purple Heart Community. That speaks for us how much we support our military. All positive things. Something on the other side, and I'm sure everybody's aware of, but when we got out there to set everything up under the table, there's a lot of graffiti written all over it. I understand there's problems everywhere, and I don't know what the answer is going to be, how we deal with all that. I know, I think the police have caught some and done the best they can do with that. I don't know how we're going to handle it. But fortunately, a lot of the graffiti was written in charcoal, so the Public Works had their pressure cleaner there and didn't knock it rotten and had it looking like new. And so we really appreciate that. So that's, I know it's an ongoing problem all over, everywhere graffiti getting written, some of it in spray paint, and you see it in the county. So I just want to give us a sense of awareness, because it kind of jumped out at me when I was out there, and I didn't realize how bad it was. So, but I know we're working on as good as we can do, but, so, any thoughts along that line? But overall, it was a great weekend. Appreciate everybody and all the support from the town, and good to see everybody out there. It was a great Memorial Weekend.
Very good. Mr. Singleton?
All about, Mr. Matthews said about the parks, I think that's something we're going to have to continue to get a plan with cameras, some type of safety features that may help provide some safety out there for residents, also, whatever recommendations the police make. But this, it's an issue that's been going on for years and years and years. I mean, they used to, in the older picnic shelter at South Garner Park, they used to break into that on a pretty regular basis, through the roof, through the doors, whatever. So it's something that's been going on for some time, so sure staff will look at what plan may be best to help provide some protection, not only for town property, but also if citizens want to follow up. What Mr. Matthews said on the Memorial Day observance, again, with the rain, it was really well-attended. Good to see young families out there. I think the, of course, Mr. Tim Stevens, as usual, does an excellent job in his story and the facts he did on Major David Hunter Pitter, who grew up on Broughton Street. And it's something I recognize on that Memorial. And he was, his family, I believe, Mr. Matthews honors a Gold Star family. And that was just outstanding to listen to what he did and gave to his fellow soldiers, and ended up being killed over there in action. So again, what Mr. Stevens did, not only talking about him, but also others, was outstanding, and we learned quite a bit. So I want to thank the town, thank staff, I know the Parks and Rec, Public Works, police, fire, everyone who took the time to work on that program. It's always nice to, always nice to see folks coming out and remember those who gave the ultimate sacrifice. And it was also good to see people, even with the misting rain, walking around the Memorial, the Veterans Memorial. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, sir. Mr. Dillinger?
I just echo the sentiments on the service Monday, and also kind of give a shout-out to the Garner Area Historical Society, too. Mr. Stevens kind of noted their role in getting the acknowledgement from the gentleman who'd been overlooked, and he'd come into the museum and started that conversation. So it's kind of serving its purpose and doing that good work. So I want to make sure they get recognized for their piece in the story, too, so. But it was a great event. MC was a little shaky at times, but, no, I'm kidding, you did a great job. But it was a good event, and thanks to everybody who participated.
Yes, I'll just echo what has already been said. Great, a great day, a great event, and hats off to the town staff. Great, a great day, a great event, and hats off to the town staff and all those who were involved with it, and also, Mr. Matthews, you did a good job. You did.
Okay, thank you. And I guess the only thing I'd add to that, and maybe it's been mentioned, but, you know, the Boy Scouts were much in evidence out there, helping with the process, and it's always good to see our scouting folks out and being a part of those kinds of ceremonies, sure enough, and thank all of you for being there, and certainly the town staff. I sent a note of thanks to, I don't think I covered everybody, but I was intending to cover Parks and Rec and public works and the police and all the other people who made that happen.
Communication staff also took some great photos and I think got some video, so you can see some of those on our website.
Exactly, correct. Thank you, Mr. Mercer and Kyle, for sure. So, you know, I knew, I guess, the night before, there was a possibility of it being moved, but, you know, for those who are in charge, it's always, I guess, a time of stress when you're not sure exactly what the weather's going to do, and I think making the call pretty early that morning was obviously the right thing to do, and the shelter was very adequate for the occasion, so good, good work, all. All right, that's all I have at this time, so anything else, council, need to bring up at this time? None? Anything else, Mr. Manager?
That's it, that's all I have.
Okay. All right, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So the vote?
Okay, motion made, and there's a second, I believe. If you're in favor, would you vote aye?
Aye.
If you're opposed, you can stick around, so, but at any rate, I declare this meeting, this, yeah, work session of the Garner Town Council to be officially completed. Thank you all.